Is being taped. I also have a special announcement here for those that didn't know, and I imagine everybody on this call does know. The passing of Betty Lou Yost. Betty Lou passed away Friday, October the 30th. She was eighty-two years old. She was our tax collector for thirty-one years. So it's a long time in public life. I don't care whose calendar you're using. She was a resident of Lower Gwinnett since nineteen sixty-eight. I'd like to have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, onto our regular business. First order is the receipt of the minutes for October the nineteenth and October the twenty-seventh. If all the supervisors have had an opportunity to look those over, we can, we can vote. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the authorization to advertise the draft two thousand and twenty-one budget. Now Craig, we advertise the budget every year at this time. Could you explain to everybody in the audience exactly why we have to advertise this budget?
We are required to advertise the budget before any motion or any approval of the budget is, is provided. It's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be on the website either tonight or tomorrow. And we'll advertise it in the paper. There'll be a, a budget at the township building for anyone who wishes to come in and see it. They'll have to make an appointment this year, which is a little bit different. And we can always make a copy of the budget if anyone is inclined to get, have a copy and come to the township building and pick it up. But we're required to advertise it for twenty days before any action can take.
Okay. All right, thank you. Does any of the supervisors have any questions concerning the authorization to advertise our draft budget?
If I could just give some highlights of the budget, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
There is no tax increase. There is no sewer usage fee increase proposed. Both of these are proposed for two thousand and twenty-one. Revenues are projected to exceed expenditures by one hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. And the draft budget does reflect one million, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. One million, seven hundred and eighty-two hundred and fourteen dollars of fund balance from all the, from six out of the twelve funds. Which means we're going to be using fund balance to balance this budget on six of, in six of the twelve funds. However, this will bring our, our balance, our fund balance down to where we were at the beginning of two thousand and twenty.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the supervisors?
I had a couple of questions. Just going over the minute, there's a couple of things that I had asked for and I hadn't got any feedback or follow-up from it. I was just wondering when could I expect that?
Okay, what, what was that? What was the items?
Specifically around the Penland Park or the basketball court, I asked if the, the costs could be separated out if that could be sent. I didn't get anything around that.
There's three things that I have written down that we have been working on since the, the budget meeting before. One is the Cedar Hill Trail. We are, we have pulled the paving off of the Cedar Hill Trail. We're going to just put more stone in where it was washed out throughout the trail. So that, that was sixty thousand dollars that we had to pave the trail. We put that money, not that money, but we put about a third of that twenty thousand dollars into stoning the, the trail at Cedar Hill Road. And that's in maintenance and general fund. The amphitheater wall at Penland or Penambler Park. I know there was a statement said that the, the block was the wrong block when it was first installed. We had a company come out, look at it. The stone is a very high quality wall, stone. That is absolutely the correct stone to put out there. And it was perhaps at the time, they didn't put on the backside of the wall. They could do some stone behind it for water penetr, so that water doesn't penetrate the wall. They also have a fabric on the wall that is actually pushing the wall back. So with Fred and myself, they're going to remove the stone as we talked about. A company is going to come in and put some drainage behind the wall and set it, set it correctly. And we'll save the amphitheater wall. So that'll be mostly our labor, except for some direction behind there. The courts at Penland Park. We had our engineer go out there and look at it. He gave a different opinion, a separate method of, of, of fixing the repairs on Penland Park Courts. However, his method and then, and the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar method is in the same ballpark. So we're keeping that number in there and we will continue to work on, on different methods of that. We can still break that down as to what, how much is for each. But I, we just got that number Friday afternoon, so, so that was.
And the other thing was the radar speed, speed display signs. I know that Chief Kenny said he was going to look into how many we actually did need. There was two initially in the recommendation. I know Mark talked about four. I was thinking more like six, so I didn't know if we had gotten feedback as far as to how many we actually do need.
Paul, you're on here.
Yes, so I'm getting a terrible echo. I did reach out to Chad, our traffic engineer, and there was really no data that he could provide to back up a number. I did reach out to Upper Dublin and we are just about completed a review of all of our accidents over the last two years. And less than five percent is what the number is probably going to shake out as being speed related as the cause of an accident. So ninety-five percent of our accidents were either, most of them are distracted driving, following too closely. So I have a report coming on the justification to buy more, which I don't see. I don't see where. I'm saying it backwards. The, the accident numbers don't support the need to control speeding. Speeding is not the major cause of our accidents by any stretch. And we are seeing higher speeds right now due to COVID. I don't know if Chad is even on here to back me up on that. All of our municipalities are seeing the same thing. There was nothing out there in talking to other municipalities as a guide or a formula to use for how many we need. So it really comes down to the other, my other thought. And I'm not sure who I talked to about this, was I was reluctant to buy more than two. And, and believe me, I'm, I'm open to whatever the board wants. I'm, I'm reluctant to buy all eight or ten in one year. Because what, what we find is that then we're, you know, may, they may not be exactly what we want. We run into a warranty, warranty issues where they're all coming out of warranty at the same time. Most of the machines we've seen are three years. I would prefer to, when we've done other things, I prefer to buy two, one year, two next year, two the following year. The other thing to note with these speed signs, they are temporary tool that we would use. And if we had two, most people keep them, most municipalities put them out for three months at a time. So each machine would cover four streets a year. So if we had two, we would cover eight streets. Well, that's a lot to cover in one timeframe. Unless we're going to put them at a certain road and leave it there. So I know just, I just went all over the, all over the map here with what we're doing. But I wanted to, and I'm not done yet because we're still looking, we're, you know, the, our software program was all redone this year. We're on the county system now and it doesn't dig down. We have to manually look at each report to come up with an answer as to the cause. So I should have that done shortly. Because I wanted to back up the, the request with data that says we have a speeding problem. And the data suggests we do not have a speeding problem. I, I know it's the number one complaint we receive, but it's perception versus reality. We do not have accidents to a high degree as a result of speeding.
So Paul, when you have your data together, are you going to come back to us with a recommendation? Or, or do you think two is the recommendation and, and that's a firm number? I want to make sure we, we consider all the, all the
Right.
options here.
Yes, so. And, and I can't tell you what the real number is because nobody, you know, Chad, I reached out to other people. Nobody could tell me what the real number was. I just was hesitant to buy, that's my, that's my own personal opinion of, I'm hesitant to buy too many at one time. And I wanted the board, I don't think I explained it the last time, that the machine, if it is, you know, three months is a long time to have a speed sign in a neighborhood. And you hope that you change behavior in that three months. And you move it and you go somewhere else. So I'm not sure if I explained that well, that each machine would, would cover four streets. So we would cover eight streets in the first year. So, you know, if you take away some of the major arteries, eight streets in a year seem pretty good to me. You know, and we're looking close to, you know, five thousand dollars a unit. So Mark, I'm, I'm beating around the bush here. There is no number that I can give you. I wanted to give you the facts of the accidents. And that's what I have. That's what we're digging in and it's less than five percent of, of, of about two hundred accidents a year.
All right, so if the, if not the second cause or, or the primary cause perhaps is distracted driver. Is there something we can do about mitigating the distracted driver? If you work with our, with our engineer for
Well, distracted driving being, somebody was looking on their phone. They weren't paying attention. I think most of them are phone related, but the excuses are always something fell. I was changing the radio station. The sun was in my eyes. There's a lot of causes of distraction. I believe the number one is the phone. You know, we all see that. I don't see how we could, I don't know what tool is out there to stop distracted driving. And, and, and I think I did talk to you, Mark, about this, that we do look at. You know, a few years back is when Summietown in Sweetsford was our, our high accident road. Well, we added stop signs.
It worked.
We took seventy-five accidents a year off the board. Last year was the right no turn on red at rare nine sixty-three. We added that sign. We took fifty-six accidents off the board. So we do, we're constantly looking at, we have a pin map. Where are our accidents? And they're on our major roads. They're on, they're on Bethlehem Pike, they're on Summietown Pike, they're on two oh two, they're on Welsh Road. They're not on Cedar Hill Road. They're not on Sturgis. They're not on, you know, our, our Tanglewood and Gwinnett and all. They're not on those streets. That's not where we're having accidents. And that's where we got our complaints and that's where these machines would go.
So Officer Kenny, because is, is, is accidents the only barometer through which we're going to measure that there is speeding or not? I know that it's the only tangible one that you potentially could use, but I think that the, the residents are kind of seeing it in their neighborhoods and in areas where maybe it's not actually resulting in an accident, but they still feel it as
Right. And, and that's correct. And that's, that's, you're exactly right Danielle. That's what we, that's what we're constantly battling, the perception of speed. It's, and a lot of it is volume and it's related to something new that has occurred in the neighborhood. Maybe it's cut through traffic. The opening of, you know, school creates different, different options for more traffic.
Is there any way to mitigate that? I don't know if these signs necessarily mitigate that. Or maybe they do.
Yeah, and nobody can give me that answer. It's, I would think that, you know, a resident that, I'll use Sweetsford Road for example, that is, that it calls about speeding a lot. They would probably be happy if we put this sign in front of their house and we left it there. Doesn't, the, the issue becomes, you know, with the speed trailer sign, the effect is short-term after the sign's removed. I don't know if we want to put these signs out and just leave them. You know, because then where, where do we stop?
They'll acclimate as well. They'll ignore it. And I've also read some reports that, you know, thrill seekers are younger demographic.
Correct, right.
If they can, what speed the, they can get feedback on and then, then the signs become a source of the accident.
Now we turn our speed trailer off at sixty miles an hour. We'll get the data, but it will not show the, it will not show the speed.
Forget the speed they were going.
We'll get their true speed. They will not see it for your exact reason that you gave. You, you don't want somebody trying, well, let me see if I can hit eighty-five.
So you're, you are collecting the data?
We do collect the accident data. There is clauses.
No, I mean, from these, I'm sorry to interrupt, but from the signs that are on the trailers.
Yep.
Do, do they collect data?
They do. They do.
Well, then we will have another source of, of data to show whether or not they're speeding.
Correct. And the data, when we put them out, Tessie shows that we do not. There are the occasional, you know, it's the eighty-fifth percentile. If eighty-five percent of the traffic is, is within the norm of the speed limit, that's considered what the speed limit should be. And every one of the times when we put the speed trailer out, we're, we're at eighty-five or higher. You get the occasional runner. You get the one guy a day that, that just goes way higher. And we try and find that person because we try and say like, all right, it's at seven-ten every morning. So we know to look for it. But and I'm coming back to you Tessie and to you Danielle. I, I don't know, this is the, this is the hard part with Zoom. Because it's very hard to really have a, a good conversation and talk it out as to what is the real number.
The, the only reason that I was, I was bringing up the questioning, the two versus the four versus six. Because I know that you had mentioned Upper Dublin started right out with nine, I think.
Right. And I found out that there was an issue there where the highway department purchased some versus police department purchased some. So there, there wasn't a very good communication there with how that happened.
Yeah, Fred's not going to do that.
Yeah, their hot, their highway purchased some, their highway handles speeding complaints. Their highway will go out and put some of the machines out. The police department will do the same thing. I, I would also tell you that Upper Dublin is probably three times the road miles that we are.
Oh yeah, yeah.
That was the other question I was going to ask. Is it square mileage based upon the number?
Chief, if I may.
Sure.
Since you're talking about different roads, just touch on briefly, here's three roads. Number one, of course, coming southbound on Bethlehem Pike from up north Montgomeryville. And they come down the hill there where there's this guy that sells Christmas trees on the right. They come down that hill and they're moving. I mean, they are moving. The, the question is, since you said that doesn't necessarily cause accidents, does it do any good putting a speed sign there? I say across from the bank or across from the township, township building, they're best usually slowed down because of the light. But coming around that bend, of course, like you said, speeding doesn't necessarily mean an accident. But I don't know if the coffers of the police department can be helpful with tickets or a warning or something. So that's one. And then I have two others, but if you could address that one, one at a time.
Well, they're, you know, that is a complaint that we get not from residents living on Bethlehem Pike. It's from residents who live on Chesterfield that are concerned when they make the left-hand turn. They're sitting on southbound Bethlehem Pike. And, you know, traffic's coming up behind them and they're worried about that. Now I'm knocking on wood, you know, we haven't had the problem. I agree. It's, it's road design. It's a bend in the road and you have a speed limit of forty-five miles an hour. But there's nothing to show us that anything needs to change.
Isn't that forty miles an hour?
Forty, I'm sorry, it's forty there. Yeah, it's forty.
All right, that's the one. The other one is my favorite across from the meadows here. Houston Road, especially on weekends. It seems like we have drag racing at a certain time, usually early in the evening. But, you know, we had the two bumps there, but they're like half the height what they were before. Again, accidents, no, but speeding, definitely.
Yeah, but there's no accidents to support it.
Yeah.
And, and we're dealing with, you know, there's a high school right there. So it's, you know, it's, it's events.
Yeah. The last one would be a road I call Huntsicker Drive, Dager Road. Twenty-five miles an hour. And we have the people that live in East Norton, West Norton, Collegeville, heading towards Fort Washington to work. And they're certainly not going twenty-five miles an hour. Maybe the speed limit should be thirty-five, but if we put thirty-five, it may go fifty-five.
Right. And see, that's
Touch base on that one.
Well, I agree with you. And that's, that's the thing. If we did, you know, there, but there hasn't been a lot of complaints on Dager Road. There's very few walkers. You know, they're on the trail.
Yeah.
They're very, I don't know of any houses that are right on the road. There's a few down towards Meadow Creek, but most of them are in off the side street there.
Yeah.
But that, that, that road is the same as many other community roads that we have that
No accidents?
That, that's, no, there's no accidents. The accidents are down at the stop sign. You know, somebody, you know, somebody didn't either stop for the stop sign or somebody thought they could go, or somebody did stop and somebody rear ends them.
Oh, you mean the, the famous Dager Road and Penland Blue Bell Pike?
Right.
Yeah, well, Rosemary almost got killed there. Years ago, nine, two thousand and fourteen, the number of people that come from the Whitpain side that run that light is just astronomical. But I don't know what could be done because they put an extra sign there. And I talked to you about it and you said you'd be tying up two officers if you just sat there for a while. But any other idea that you have to address the speeds coming from Blue Bell that hit that corner? I mean, all you have to do is stay there yourself, sit in Bethlehem Baptist parking lot and you'll see it. But we do have accidents there, Paul.
We do.
Any idea on how to slow the people down coming from Blue Bell? All right. We'll just keep it in the back of your head if something comes up.
Okay. Tessie, I think you were going to say something.
Yes, I, I appreciate that you're, there's not easy answers here, but I'm a, just a little bit concerned about what I'm picking up as an attitude that, well, there's never been an accident there. So maybe that means we won't ever have an accident. And I think we're all trying to come up with ideas to prevent that from happening, that eventuality. Because if people are speeding, eventually one of these days, there's going to be a bad accident. But I, I'm with Danielle. I think, I, I think if we can do something to try to bring the speed down across the township, we should give it a try. I appreciate your thought on not investing too heavily in the same technology upfront. Maybe we want to space it out over a while. But I, I'm really concerned that we're kind of talking ourselves out of doing something. So I don't want that to be the case.
Yeah, I didn't mean to come across that way. I was just trying to say, I'm, I'm trying to give you the numbers behind why we should buy more. And, and I can't come up with those numbers. I'm not saying not to. I'm just giving you the facts that we have that we can document that says we have a problem on this road. Because if that was the case, if there was an accident-related issue, then we could get PennDOT involved. We could look at other, we'd get Chad involved. Why are we having accidents on this road? We would do a study and we would find out that A, either the speed limit's too high and it needs to be lowered or other issues. Maybe the, you know, the road, they call it a road diet. Maybe the road has to be narrowed to slow people down. There's other ways to slow people down other than lowering the speed limit. So I didn't mean to say it the way it may have came off.
Yeah, well, the other issue is accidents is one metric, but other metrics are I can't walk my dog on the, you know, along the road because I'm afraid I'll get killed. I can't ride my bicycle because I'm afraid I'll get run over. I can't enjoy my street because the heavily increase in traffic is preventing me from, you know, it's impacting my quality of life. So I, I think there are other metrics that we can use to evaluate this problem. And again, I perfectly understand there's not easy answers here, but
And that, that's some of what the township is trying to do. We're unique in that we have very few sidewalks and a lot of our roads are very narrow. They're not meant to be walked on. They're, they're not meant to be bicycle different. But, and, you know, I've seen in my career, the number of trails that we encourage people to use instead of the road because there are no sidewalks. Our roads are not, a lot of our roads are not meant to be walked on because it wouldn't be safe, no matter what we do.
I can appreciate that. I have, I just want to follow up. I'd be remiss if I didn't. Can you speak to the accident history on what I, I call Pen Ambler Road? But I guess at some point it changes in a spring garden around the new development of Ambler Yards. And the other thing that just, just if you could touch on is, is removable speed bumps? Anything that we would potentially consider? Not permanent ones, but I, I know that you might be familiar with the ones that you can actually remove and, and move to different areas as needed.
Right. So let me, can I answer your first question with, I don't want to, I don't want to test my memory here on what I recall for Pen Ambler Road. But I'll, I'll make a job one tomorrow and Thursday, then I'll have the report to you by Friday on the accident data that I have for the year and, and causes. I'll focus and get that done by Friday.
Just this year, Paul, two thousand and twenty, or can you go back to?
I went, I went back a year. I went, I went back a year from the date. I started from two weeks ago. I went back a year from that date. So I don't have, you know what I'm saying? I just went back a solid year. I'll try and go back a little further. But I'll get you at least a year by Friday with the causes of, of, and, and locations. So you'll see on a map where the accidents are. Danielle, the second part of your questionnaire about speed bumps.
Before you go to that, I, I know that you're, you're talking about accidents, but do you have any data that relates to speeding tickets being issued in various parts of the township? And I say that because I'm aware that there, you know, speeding tickets are being issued and it might not have been an accident, but maybe you have identified that somebody's been speeding in an area.
Yeah, I can give you that. And I'll tell you that it's very difficult to enforce speeding in Pennsylvania. Not being, if you're not, if you're not a state trooper.
But Laura wanted, has caught me a number of times, so I know you're effective.
And, and, and I get in trouble sometimes for, you know, the lack of a speeding ticket, but it's very difficult to
Being able to use radar, I know.
Yeah, because we're, we're making, we're trying to catch a violator and we have to go twice as fast to catch the violator. So we got a person doing 50 and we have to, we have to drive 80 to catch them. And I'm just not going to do that. I, I, I think I, I don't, I don't ask the men and the ladies of our department to do that. I don't think it's safe. So there are other ways, but it's difficult without having a specialized unit that that's all they do. Speed bumps. I think Fred would probably have a lot to say about speed bumps also. I can only, I can tell you a few things. When this, this topic is brought up in email chains through the police chiefs of Montgomery County and at meetings, number one response from people that have tried it is, don't do it. You'll regret it. There are lots of issues with noise. Nobody wants it in front of their house because they're very noisy. The other issue, I know that you can say they're temporary, becomes a plowing issue. The biggest complaint I've heard from other chiefs is nobody wants it in front of their house. Realtors will tell you, they don't want it in their neighborhood because it lowers property values. Because you, you were acknowledging that you have a speeding problem and it, it's known. It'll decrease house values to acknowledge that. So they're not great answers, but they're off the top of my head. That's what I hear.
Well, I appreciate, I just want to say, I appreciate the discussion. There's been many, and I don't know how much you follow social media topics and posts around speeding and just the discussion and how to mitigate it. And I think everyone, I, I think there is a level of perception versus reality as far as what the speed people actually are going. And then I think there's just the frustration of, you know, knowing that it exists and not knowing how to deal with it.
Yep. And, and, and as I said earlier, that's, that's the hardest part I found with this Zoom is it's really hard to get the vibe from the board and from you. You know, it's hard to, it's hard to really talk it out when we're not sitting across from each other. I, believe me, I'm fine with buying more. I'm just more of a I like, I like to know what we're getting into before we make a big investment. And because $5,000 is a lot of money for one unit. Maybe we, and Craig's probably going to flip if I say, maybe we increase it a little bit and then we do two, I buy two in January, I'll request to buy two. If it works out well, maybe I buy two more in June, July, August.
We're gonna have to depend on you, Paul, to come up with some well-reasoned arguments or discussions on what we need to do. So
Right.
we're, we're buying two initially, right?
And I proposed to buy two and, and Mark, I'll agree with you. That's, that's what's hard for me. When I talk to you guys for, you know, 15 minutes every other week, it's hard for me to get a, a direction of really where, where we really want this to go. And I apologize for that, but it's just difficult under the circumstances with Zoom and not being in person.
Would you like us to make a motion to have you purchase four? Or what is it you would like us to do?
Well, right now, we can just, we're looking just to authorize the advertisement of the budget. We can adjust the budget within the, the month and the final budget number would be in front of you in December. This will not make or break that we had to re-advertise the budget. It's within the, the limits. So, all right.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I thought you were done, Craig.
I am, pretty much.
I was just gonna say, I, I think that I would want additional feedback from the community before we made a major investment to get a firm understanding of everyone else's perception of, of the level of, not the level of importance of health and safety as it relates to speeding, but the, the level that they feel it's prevalent within their neighborhoods or their communities. And then use that information to cross compare with the data that Officer, I'm, I'm sorry, Chief Kenny gives us so that we can have a better idea of A, where people feel that it's most prevalent and, and, and see if that matches up with accidents and/or maybe tickets. And then B, to, if you have the knowledge or the understanding that potentially we could use speed bumps or we could use other measures, but that's going to result in some negative effects that you're going to have to deal with within your community. I know that other municipalities require that a certain percentage of a street cul-de-sac neighborhood sign off and agree.
Yep.
That yay, yes, we do want these temporary speed bumps in our neighborhood with the understanding of all the things that are going to come with it that you talked about. The noise, the, the potential decrease in property values. But if they truly believe that speeding is that big of an issue, people are willing to sign off. And so if we, if we kind of, because I know that not everybody's listening to our Zoom meetings and not everybody's coming to the township and paying attention to what we're deciding on. But if we make them aware that this, these are the things that we're discussing and you're taking time out of your day to, to post it on social media, take your time out to share, share your feedback in, in a, in another form, whether it be a survey or some kind of participation, so that we can use that data and make an informed decision about purchases in the future.
Okay. I can work on that.
Okay. Is there any more comments on advertising the budget?
There, there is some question, a question from the audience.
Where I was going.
When we're going there. Okay.
Okay. So, so we're good. Now I'd like to hear from the audience if they have any questions.
So the, one was sent in, but also Deborah Schaefer has her hand up. So I'm, I don't know if it's going to be the same question, but we'll let her speak.
It's, it is about the speed signs. So I don't know if this is the appropriate place to do it. Should I wait or no? Well, my first question that I actually put in the chat was, has there been a discussion about where the speed signs would go? And that is related to the fact that I live on Penland Pike, which I know is a state road. Can, can a speed sign be put on Penland Pike because it is a state road?
Paul, do you have an answer for that?
Well, it's a, Penland Pike is a county road.
A county road.
My understanding is yes, we can.
Okay. So, and this kind of piggybacks on what Mr. Brandt has been talking about in terms of Dager Road, what Tessie has been talking about in terms of a sense of safety and also what Danielle has been talking about. Because we do not have sidewalks and we have these trails to use, there is an issue on Penland Pike always at rush hour in the morning and the afternoon, but very often any time of day. In order to get to the trails, many people like from Woodbridge Meadow, from my house, from the new townhouse development, people have to cross by foot. We have to cross Penland Pike to get to the trails. And that can be very challenging, not just because of the volume, but because of the speed at which people are traveling. And in particular, we, we've been in our house for 28 years. And for that long, I have called Penland Pike Dump Truck Alley because specifically James Morrissey Dump Trucks seem to use Penland Pike as an artery for, I don't know where they're going, but they, they go very fast. And to get to the trail to walk our dog for people to, you know, from Woodbridge Meadow to use the trails, it is, thank God, no, no pedestrian in the time that we have been here, no pedestrian has been killed. But it is very challenging to cross that road. I mean, I, you know, when I leave my driveway to get on the Penland Pike, sometimes I have to wait five minutes. And I, you know, I use, I use that trail multiple times a day. And I know that people in Woodbridge Meadow, in Foxfield, and now with that new develop, there is a lot of foot traffic. And it's, it's difficult. So, you know, I would like to see, I understand that if the speed limit is 35, people feel at liberty to go 40, 45, 50. And it's, like I say, thank God, no one has, in the time that we've been here, has, has been, has been struck. But it is, it is challenging to get to the trail. So I, you know, I would be in favor of some sort of speed limitation, whether it's a sign or a speed bump or something on Penland Pike between, especially people blow the sign at Dager Road all the time. And I know that because I, because I see it. So it's the speed, the, the, the stop sign is effective most of the time, but not all of the time. And the, and the speed between the traffic light at Bethlehem Pike and Norristown Road. And then there is no traffic light again for, until you get to Morris Road. People barrel down this road. It is, it is, it's challenging.
Greg, can we look at, I don't, I don't know, and maybe you can get with Chad. You know, the power line trail has the, the flashing lights for pedestrians that want to cross it.
Yes.
Push a button. Deborah, I haven't heard that this was, I can understand where it's an issue, but I, I, no one's ever brought this to me that I'm aware of before. And Kathy, I, I think Kath would, would be the one that would have the most direct knowledge because of where she used to live. But
But, but Deborah does bring up a good point. There is more residents along Penland Pike with the addition of the carriage homes down there. And we want to encourage the use of the trails at the same time.
I think also, also, you know, it's always, it's always been a problem. We, and I don't, I know that you're not familiar where we are. Our, our driveway is parallel to Woodbridge Road and there are four or five houses that use our driveway. And more than once, there has been a traffic accident, I know this personally, with people trying to get out of our driveway, not being able to see the, the oncoming traffic. There, there have been at, at least two accidents just coming out of our driveway. And since the pandemic, the trail has been used so much more by people out of Woodbridge. And that means, I'll give you a perfect example. Yesterday, we wanted to walk the dog in Woodbridge, which meant that we had to cross Penland Pike, use the trail, and then cross Penland Pike again to go into Woodbridge. And it was 4:30 in the afternoon, 4 o'clock, the traffic was crazy. And this is, you know, there are many, many, many more people using the trail. And especially if they're walking to Starbucks, there are a lot, there, there's much more foot traffic than there, than there ever was. And Mark, I think that those flashing pedestrian lights, I, I know, because I used the power line trail myself, that, that would be a fabulous remedy. It, it really would. When I, when I am running and I cross Dager Road, sometimes people stop for me and sometimes
Sometimes they don't.
But I do appreciate, you know, but there's nothing, there is absolutely nothing on Penland Pike. So if we had pedestrian crossings with some flashing lights, that could be a, a really good solution.
Well, Craig, could you, could you look into that and get with Chad and see whatever our options are? Because, you know, that, that does make a lot of sense. When you consider how much the, the trail network there is integrated. Because the bridge now behind the carriage houses connects, connects up. So there's, and we want people to stay on the trails. So
Right. You, you only, and Chad will know and you'll be able to figure this out pretty quickly. You are talking a county road. So we don't have the rights that we have on regular township roads as easily on a county road or a state road.
Sure.
Obviously, we look into it.
Yeah, I know some people at the county, so, so we could all maybe make some
Well, we, we had this issue on Bethlehem Pike where they tried to put a, a crosswalk in for the school district. You can't do it. The, the state won't allow it.
Well, and I think we're, while we're looking at it, Craig, the flashing lights at that Dager Road crossing.
How many flashing lights you want?
Just look into it. That's our road. It should be easy. Just, because Deborah's not the only one that's been complaining about that one.
But, and, and, and going back to what Tessie said earlier, not Tessie, I think Danielle said, you know, it's tough to get community input. But a combination of two signs and two crosswalk signs may be better than four speed signs.
Yeah.
So I think it is, it is a, a, a multi-tool
Right.
process.
Deborah, did you describe Penn Lane? Is that where you live?
Yes.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Deborah. Well, we'll, we'll look in there and see if we can do it in it.
Thank you. I'm much appreciated.
Deborah, we can talk about this during the open mic portion, but I was wondering if you had any feedback as a follow-up to the church sign on Penland.
Only, only what went on on next door and the majority of people did not like the sign. There were a couple of people who appreciated things like, you know, November 3rd is election day, please vote. But for the most part, people did not like the sign.
Greg, did we have any feedback from Ken Amy on the sign?
He was working with the church and they, they didn't, well, at first they didn't know how to use the sign and then they came up with some solutions when they called the sign company. And I think it's, I think everything that's working now is under the, the, the requirements under the zoning hearing boards. Decision.
Okay.
Well, see if you can get an update, Craig, from, from Ken.
I think that was the update. He, he gave us that a couple of weeks ago before being Z.
And when I drove by, the thing that hit me is the, the brightness or candle power of the backlit was really high. So I don't know if there's anything we can do about the intensity of that or not.
And it's still coming in multiple colors, which I know that he said was not part of the decision.
Yeah. So you could, you could shave out there. It's pretty bright. It's pretty bright. Okay. Thank you. Are there any more questions from the audience concerning the budget? The draft, the advertisement draft budget?
I don't see anymore.
Okay. Thank you. Can I have a motion to authorize to advertise the 2021 budget?
I'm moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Now we come to public comments. Any, any, any comments for items not on the agenda? Any issues anybody would like to discuss in the audience? You can speak now.
I'm not saying anything.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to the manager's report. Greg, do you have anything to?
No. Yes, tomorrow the Veterans Day Committee is having their brief ceremony. Um, yes, uh, tomorrow the Veterans Day Committee is having their, uh, uh, brief ceremony. Uh, this year compared to the last few, um, it's gonna be ba- basically a, a wreath. Um, laying at both the Veterans Park and the West Second High School Memorial. Uh, starting at, um, it will be starting right at eleven o'clock as that's the, uh, the eleventh hour on the eleventh day of the eleventh month. Um, at Veterans Park and then they will move down to the West Second High School and, and do the same type of ceremony there. Everyone's invited, um, the committee reached out to the, um. The, um, uh, Quintet Estates, the retirement homes and, um, it doesn't sound like they're going, anyone will be participating from there. Um, there won't be a band this year, there won't be any speakers this year because of the COVID, but, uh, they still wanted to do a, a brief ceremony, so. Uh, that'll be tomorrow at eleven o'clock, starting at the, uh, Veterans Park in Lower Gwinnett. And the administrative township offices will be closed tomorrow in honor of Veterans.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor's comments, would anybody like to, uh, uh, bring anything up, Ed, you're our senior member?
I have, uh, one thing, um, I don't know if it's, if paddle ball or the.
Pickleball.
Pickleball, I knew I wa- paddle ball wasn't right, uh, I had brought up, uh, two, um. Sandy and Fred, uh, I mentioned, um, Penny Amber Road Park. Uh, the old Amchem site, which I'm happy to say years ago. Um, I guess in the middle nineties, uh, we purchased that, um, and now it's a park. I do not think that pickleball will work at that park at all, I had, I envisioned something at the end of the parking lot. Uh, towards the tracks, I know, uh, Sandy had mentioned and, uh, Sandy and Fred. Were down there and there is a, some type of easement, um, near the tracks. Uh, but I don't see anywhere that it will fit in and if we did squeeze it in, it would really ruin the park that's there now. So my next, uh, journey is going to be up. Um, off of Wash Road, our park up there and, uh, hopefully. We can fit something in up there, I don't, I, I, I'm against anything, uh, in the Penland Park. Uh, because of the noise, uh, they have enough activity there now, uh, it's not fair to the residents living across from that park. So, um, that's my report and I, I didn't have it, I should have called. Uh, Fred and Sandy, but I did not, so I'm taking this opportunity to make that report.
Okay, thank you, Ed, uh, duly noted, uh, staff, I'm sure will, will look at all the recommendations. Kath.
Yes, I have nothing to add, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you very much, um, Tessie. Here, I'm mute, Tessie.
Thank you, uh, I'd like to reach out to the other board members and ask that we come together and review the RFQs for the communication. Person, uh, so that we can move forward with that, uh, position.
Well, that was my thunder.
And I just sent an email four block asking the same thing.
Same thing, right, so we, we're gonna have to do something in the next couple of weeks because we want, we want to move forward on that, so. Um, set up some interviews and, um, make sure we understand who we're going to bring in. Uh, so, uh, Craig. We have, we have a list and, uh, we might have to have a executive committee meeting.
Yeah, Tessie, uh, mentioned that we should have that, um, and we could talk about what I was just gonna ask, so.
Right. Right, okay, thank you, Danielle.
Um, it's kind of a question, but I, I'll share it, I had some feedback that, um, some residents had shared with me. Around, um, experiences, I guess, with our new trash hauler and, um, just, I guess, clarification that's needed, so. I know that it's supposed to be the exact same contract that Waste Management had, um. I guess Waste Management allowed larger families or individuals who maybe have exposure to woodland creatures and don't want to leave exposed bags outside. The option of having an additional, um, bin is what I call it, um, or a trash container. Um, it appears that Republic Service has indicated that they specifically are not allowed. To give lower acquainted residents an additional bin, even if you're willing to pay, um, an additional fee. Um, a lot, a couple of people reached out just for clarification and, and to kind of understand if it's the same. Contract, why are they specifically being told that they are not allowed when they did have it with Waste Management? So I'm leaving that, I guess, more to Craig and Jamie to, to maybe follow up and, and share clarification if there's a reason why or if Waste Management just gave us. That without it being specified in the contract.
We have got, I, I've gotten that question as well, um, and I spoke with our, the contact we have through the contract. And they will provide them with an additional trash bin if requested, um, it just, the. The new bins that they had ordered for this contract did not, um, did not include additional receptacles for individuals. So they may be getting an older receptacle as the additional one.
So do they need to, just so I can follow up, do they need to say anything specific because they had a, a name and a person and a time that they spoke to them and they said you absolutely cannot have one, so they just call back?
Um, they should, they probably should try back at Republic because we had had that discussion with them, um, after I had received a few calls, so. They may have called prior to that.
Very good to know, um, beyond that, uh, I'm just kind of doubling down on what Tessie said, I, I think we should, we do need to meet and make a decision and I'm going to share with. My fellow supervisors, information about, um, community development and what that looks like and how we can move towards a strategic plan and, and starting that process. For business corridors.
Okay, thank you, um. Uh, I've also gotten questions about, uh, you know, our new hauler, Republic and. You know, there's a little bit of confusion as to exactly, uh. Pumps in the road, so to speak, last night I, there were some calls about Murrow Hill, a whole street didn't get picked up. Uh, but the cross streets did, uh, so, uh, Republic sent out another truck, I, I think it was close to six PM, I was out there and I watched them and. They, they came through the truck and, and then they emptied the bins, so, so they're still, they're, they're still working out the kinks in the system. But they were responsive, they're just, like any new contract, like any new, um, project, everybody gets involved when. Until it gets spun up, it, sometimes there's a little bit of, uh, discomfort or pain in the beginning, but it, it generally speaks. Uh, well of them because they responded, the other question I've gotten quite a bit is, uh, the, uh, the billing rates, how come they're. What they are, we want the old billing rates, well, the old billing rates were the rates of the old contract. The new billing rates are the rates of the new contract and the new contract was a lower rate. Than the prior hauler or Waste Management, so, so there's not clear understanding, everybody wants the old billing rate. Uh, as opposed to the new contract billing rate, which was still less than Waste Management. So that, so that message is still, it's getting out there, but it's a little slow to penetrate. Um, and, uh, but again, it's a new contract, so that's just some of the questions I, I've got and like I said, the. Last night that truck came back and, uh, you know, they, they were out there picking up the trash that they missed, so that's, that speaks well of them, so.
I, I would say our number one call, especially this week, in the end of last week, has been when is Waste Management picking up their bins? Because people have had them curbside for close to two weeks now. And we've been, you know, we've been trying to tackle that with Waste Management on a daily basis and. They just haven't collected them all yet.
No, and I'd like to thank you, Jamie, for your patience and your graciousness in handling all these calls, there have been many coming in, I know I forwarded a few myself. Sounds like a few other of the supervisors may as well and the feedback I've gotten back about your customer service has been really great. So thank you for, for, uh, being a good representative.
Yeah, she's got a great sign over her desk, I love it and it goes something like, uh, you know, be nice and get the job done, I can't, that's not a quote, but. Uh, when I walk into your office, Jamie, I always appreciate that, that's saying, so, okay. So unless anybody has anything else they'd like to.
Yeah, one, one thing, Mark, if I may. Um, I wonder if Neil has anything to report about Amber Water.
There's nothing new on that, Mr. Brandt, uh, there is a conference call scheduled with the judge. Uh, in three weeks, that will be the next, uh, litigation event, but nothing has transpired in the interim. We're trying to set up at this point a conference call, um, with all the municipal solicitors. Uh, to gauge what, uh, every board has determined will be their response to some of the issues raised.
All right, uh, do me a favor, just call me Ed Neil, we've known each other for a long time.
Sorry with me.
All right.
Okay, okay Neil, you can still call me Mr. Chairman, I'm all right.
That's all right too.
All right. All right, folks, uh, I think we're, we're done here, thank you everybody for attending, meeting is adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.